Okay, welcome everybody. We're in TV land. We'll call the meeting to order. The approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make an addition to it if you please.
Could we have a second request?
Okay, sorry, second.
Second, second then. Yes, Glenn, would you like to?
Okay, financial request. I guess it'd be 11C.
Okay, 11C.
I have a financial request.
Good, perfect.
Thank you.
Any other additions? If there are none, is there any conflict of interest?
I have a conflict.
You have a conflict of interest?
Yes. Do I tell you what item?
Yes, please, if you would.
Item 9B.
9B. Very good. Well, thank you for that. Okay, although in favor of the agenda, is Vabese in the eye?
Eye.
And then motion carried. Do you have any presentation at the moment? Number five, the option of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January the 14th. Now move on.
So moved.
And seconded. Although in favor, is Vabese in the eye?
Eye.
And then motion carried. Business arising from the minutes. We have the Solace Waste Authority, the 220 kg fee exceptions. And if we go to the judgment, I'll read that. The Waste Park had its meeting this morning and the subject, this comes from the Waste Park Authority. Waste Park had its meeting this morning and the subject of the Temple Baptist Church in the south end of Yarmouth wanted to, the Waste Park to accept their leave, how CND at no charge came up. The requests had been made to town and the town referred them to write a letter asking for exemption. As the Waste Park does not have a policy on this, a letter will be sent to them stating we do not accept it. Further, the Waste Park does not want to set a precedent where everyone is asking for freebies. So the discussion about the 220 kg we had at our meeting last night fits into the same category as this. It's up to each council to have a policy of what is allowed. The Waste Park is owned by the three units and we cannot decide for each unit who should or should not be dropping out item at no charge. This will have to come from each unit. Just as the 220 kg from Argyle, the town and the municipality of Yarmouth does come from each unit. So I guess like Counselor Dickin had asked, then we do it and send a letter to the board, in other words, this council, and the Waste Park manager of how it should be built if that is would be the choice of this council. Also, to remind everybody here that if we do have any freebies, gusts, here with check, a manager was telling us, it can affect our diversion credit. So as the Waste Park, we have to watch what we do there. And Waste Check would possibly get less funding from the government on that. So it is a concern, but it depends on what the council wishes to do. Yes, Danny?
I guess it doesn't go in, even the 220 that we bring there, that the homeowner doesn't have to pay. The Waste Park gets their money from us. We're billed because they ask. It's not a freebie at the, actually free at the, there. It's free for myself if I bring something from my house up to 220. And the municipality pays for that 220 that I brought in. Correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So the Waste Park doesn't have the ability to just say, yeah, no charge?
This is what I'm reading here, exactly. That's right.
And so that's correct. But we pay for those that come in.
Right, yes. And that's where, when I read at the end that it could possibly get less funding from the government for the diversion. They still get paid, so maybe, I'm not sure if that's correct.
Correct, then we stand there.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
That's what I'm asking. I'm not sure. But I can see where, you know, you start doing that and then... Are we setting a precedent here? You know, like if we were to tell people, okay, if you're going to renovate, then you can bring your waste there. See, when it comes to the ones, the policy that we passed before regarding unsightly, we're kind of forcing these people to do that, right? I mean, I know, I know it's not our fault that they're there, it's their fault and then they get it clean free. I can see your point. I can see what you're saying there, Counselor Dickin. I'm not sure that I agree that we should do that, for sure. But that's just my view anyways. That we should say that if you renovate and whatever, that you can bring your debris, whatever you want to call it, to the dump and that we'll pay for it. I guess we, no, we don't pay for, how does that work? No, we don't pay for it if they bring it. And nobody picks it up, so.
Are you referring to dangerous and slight?
No. I'm referring to that if I renovate and I bring my CND, that's my cost. The municipality doesn't pay for that at all.
The municipality covers 220 a week and anything in excess of that would be billed. In fact, I think from a practical perspective, if you brought a load that was 250, I think you're billed for the entire load.
Okay.
You don't get 200 free.
Free, exactly.
You get a load that is less than 220 per week.
Right, right, yes.
I think that's how it's done practically.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know I brought stuff there that I had to pay. But I don't know if I paid for the full load or if I paid for the excess of the 220. I have no, absolutely no idea, I didn't ask.
I can answer that?
Yes.
You will get 220 off, you will?
You will.
Yes, you will. And on that, for faculty discussion or?
Okay, that's, yeah.
You do.
I never asked, I just, I got a bill and I paid it.
Like shingles, you bring shingles from your roof and they don't do 220, the rest?
The rest, okay, the difference.
The difference.
So the municipality pays for part of that CND?
We do that currently. So we would treat everybody equally in that sense, in that particular sense.
I'm just curious, have you had requests for that? Has that come up in conversation?
Yes, it has, and that's why I brought it forward. And like, they can bring in 220 kilograms every week with no charge. But like they say, if they're doing a roof or a big project, it's not feasible. And that, you know, to bring in 220 kilograms, 220 kilograms, and the municipality will still pick up the 220 kilograms each week. So I've had questions put to me like that. And I also noticed when you do go around some of your side roads, a lot of times you will see roofing materials or old wood where people have done renovations.
That's right.
And that, so I was just wondering if we could look at some other type of system there where they'd be allowed maybe once a year and that up to maybe 1,500 kilograms. And that, which would be 3,000 pounds, which would be still less than what they'd be allowed bringing at 220 kilograms every week. You know? And then I was also looking at, we can't do it for these people that want to haul their garbage to the dump and want to enhance the community and pick up their litter and pick up their garbage and all that. But yet we're looking at somebody that may want to just leave it out on their front lawn and that, oh, I'm not going to worry about that because at some point in time the municipality is going to come along and tell me just to go in there and take it in for nothing, or they'll take it in for me, you know? And that, so that's why I put the question, so that's all.
Yes.
Just one comment to what Glenn said. Anybody that dumps in the back roads had no intentions of taking it to the dump in the first place.
Wouldn't matter, I was going to say the same thing.
So anything that's dumped, I see, I went for a ride in the back road yesterday in Barrington municipality, there was washers, there's dryers, there's couches, construction.
Which costs nothing to bring.
So they had no intentions of going anywhere but there with it anyhow. And what I've seen over the years.
And Barrington, they pick up anything on their big pickup days, so.
Okay.
And there could be some of that, but even, you know, if you could divert one or two loads a year from on a side road somewhere into the landfill site, you know? Anyway, it was just, I was asked to bring it up and I brought it up and we'll see where it goes, that's all. Thank you.
So I guess we're consensus to move forward or do you want any more direction from, direction for staff to this point this night?
I would like to see if we could, you know, have it where we could have, I don't know, like I say, up to 1,000 or 1,500 kilograms once a year to be, if that's something that may be doable, you know, from a civic number, because that's what they go by there now when you take the, you know?
To go through a motion, I would think, you know, like if we're going to do that.
We, I know that we could get numbers to see how much Argyle, I believe Alan, we probably could get numbers of how CND Argyle brings in. I don't know if that would be helpful to know, what kind of a number are we looking in the run of a year? Like if it's a contractor, are we setting ourselves up that a contractor has to pay but not the landowner? And what we've, what Glenn in the ring, his Waste Park manager, he said, there's a lot of stuff going on. The contractor comes in with a lot of stuff. He's got the owner of the house to save the 220 kg. There's many scenarios that happen. And this is this guy's house, the guy couldn't come. Well, the contractor says, well, it's his house, this is his civic number, but we don't allow the contractor to go there unless the owner of the residence is in the vehicle or you can't get it. So there's stuff to look at, you know?
But I guess in a case like this, then you've already taken care of that question because of the homeowners not in the vehicle.
Absolutely.
And that they would be exempt from getting that anyway.
But I guess what I also meant, Glenn, was so if we're allowing the owner to come with his own, his own stuff, what about the contractor? So are you saying then that we wouldn't do that to the contractor, a job on behalf of someone?
But can the contractor do it now?
No, yesterday.
Okay, so you've already taken care of that, like I say.
That part, yeah.
Can I come?
Yes, go ahead.
Another issue I see when it comes to policing it is like, a lot of, like some homeowners will hire a neighbor or two or somebody does limited contracting and, I mean, they're going to, they're going to take advantage of this, however many kilograms once a year. And it puts the legitimate contractor in a unfair position because they can't compete. The mom and pop for the son and father little operation. I like the concept, but I can't see how it would be possibly policed.
I agree.
And in all the years I've been here, I've never had a request like that. But I mean, I'm not saying it can't happen, but I don't think it's a big enough problem. We should waste a lot of time off, frankly, in my opinion.
Okay, and that's fair, we can move on, yeah. And if it comes back, I'll just bring it back up, that's all.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to numbers. 6B, which is the Rising Tide project. 6 page, 8 page attachment to that. I would like if our CAO could speak on that too.
Sure. So last meeting you had a presentation done by Miguel Deo and his team regarding an idea that they're pitching. Really essentially what it is, is a branding, a branding project that would include branding of your website and aerial photography, video, etc. So you were there, so you got the presentation.
Interesting, yeah.
This is the detail that we would have sent it a while back, but I didn't actually include it with the presentation. So I guess, I mean, the reason why I put it on Business Rising is, you know, what are we going to do with this? So there is, so I've had some conversation with staff around what this might mean. So the cost amount that's included in this presentation would not allow us to go directly to, we'd have to go to public tender. So he has pitched, his team has pitched an idea that may or may not be interesting to council at this time. And so I guess what I'm asking is, and we don't have to decide this today, but it'll stay on as Business Rising as long as you want to speak about it. And so we haven't really provided a lot of information to you subsequent to the presentation. A couple of things that you should be made aware of. If it is, if the idea of a branding project for the municipality of Argyle is one that is compelling, that is attractive to this council, it has implications to the work that we're doing currently. So we have a website that is under development. The cost of doing so is negligible. I mean, it really isn't worth, the money that we've invested in this project is not worth protecting. Okay, I'm not suggesting it's, it's like $3,000, right? So the amount that we've invested is not so high that you wouldn't change your mind around doing something differently. Okay? Not to suggest that 3,000 isn't an insignificant amount of money, I just, you know, it could have been 20, right? So at this point financially, there wouldn't be a reason to change our direction. It would not stop us from changing our direction. So I would suggest with everything that's going on, you know, municipally, there's a lot of change and a lot of, you know, demographic changes and there's, you know, top consolidation and new admin building and a new website and there's a lot of new and potentially exciting things happening in the municipality proper. And other municipalities certainly have invested time and energy in branding. What would happen, in fact, you know, we do have, in my opinion, sections of things that we've done. We have a vision, we do have a logo that represents our municipality. In essence, when people recognize the logo and then recognize us, but that doesn't make it a brand. Okay? A brand is a much more comprehensive piece of work that would fundamentally change the way we do business. So in meeting with Scott, our IT expert, his first inclination was to go to the website that Miguel said was one of the best in the province, right? I believe it was Kentville.
Yeah.
You go to that website and that's nothing like ours, right? It is very, very well done. There's no question about it. And so I guess the question I'd like to pose to you, and again, you may, you probably want to think about this and you may have questions to come back and get more information before we can make a decision. But I don't want to, I don't want to be in a situation where we do the website and finish the website and then you're like, okay, we should do branding. And then the whole thing will be just scrapped and done again. So to do a website of that level is a lot more than $3,000. And to do the branding associated with that, obviously there's a cost associated with that as well. So really, it's kind of a strategic question for you. Like what is it that you want to do now into the near future? And how does that impact the work that we've done so far? I guess I'll just make one more point and I'll just send it back to the chair to retake control of this thing. And so I guess from my perspective, the, what the presentation did not talk about is the role of YASTA and their website along with the work that we do. So that was not part of the presentation. So the analysis of where we are, certainly they went to our website and found our website to be whatever it was. And we're all in agreement that there needs to be major changes. However, you know, YASTA has done a lot of this work. YASTA has done the optimization work. So when people type in tourism Argyle, YASTA's website will pick up some of the things that they are saying would be picked up. So if we did this work, we'd have to be a bit more broad in the way that we, we wouldn't just analyze our website. We'd analyze the websites of our partners and how that would work. So to do it properly, and I'm not, I'm not saying they did anything improper. They're doing, they're pitching a concept to them, right? So anyway, so some of what he has presented, we have partially done through YASTA. And there's no question that our website does not look like Kentville. And so the question, I guess, coming back to it is, you know, is this, is this concept of branding appealing to you? And what do you need in order to make a decision one way or another, knowing full well that we cannot go directly to this particular company to do the work, even if you were interested? Okay? This is that.
Any comments? Yes?
Yeah, I have a comment. I don't know the difference between Kentville's and Bridgewater's website, whether it's good or not. The question is, how do you get people to click on your Waste, well, you can, the website, it can be as good or better than anybody else's, but if nobody's going to click on it, like I don't sit there thinking, okay, maybe I'll click on Summersaw tonight and the next night with somebody else, right? You've got to have a reason to want to click on Argyle. And if somebody that's thinking about tourism or coming here, I mean, they can get initial basic information with what we've got and that's going to be improved. So I can't see, like Alan said, it's got to go to tenders anyhow, but I can't see how you can increase traffic just by having a better website. You've got to have other types of advertising to get people to look at it.
Yeah, if I may address that, Mr. Chair, that's true. And so, but what happens is if somebody's doing a search, it's the, it's whether that search brings them to our website is really the key piece. And I think, and YASTA does that to some extent, and Nova Scotia does that with their own websites. When you type in tourism Nova Scotia, your tourism Nova Scotia website will come up. The question is, where are we in the world and can we be seen? And right now, we can't be seen very well with our website and other, I mean, we're seen well by our residents. Our residents know where we are. But if we're seeking to gather attention outside of our region, our website's not designed appropriately for that at this time. And it's not just about website. There's, it's a broader thing, but Counselor Donelson's correct.
Well, most people, if they're thinking about relocating, the first thing they're going to do is go to a real estate site that's going to be their first stop and check housing and prices and then, yeah, they'll get more information as they go down the line. I don't know. I don't think it's worth pursuing at this point.
Counselor Dickin?
I was just going to say, I don't know if it's not worth pursuing maybe at some point in time, but right now with all the uncertainties that may be around the council, I would say, you know, why would we spend a lot of taxpayers' money to find out in six months' time or a year's time that we're going a different route and that we're no longer the municipality of Argyle? And for God's sakes, if anybody's watching, I'm not saying that's how it was going to happen, but just, you know, I just hate to see a bunch of money spent and then that website not portray what we wanted to portray at that time. That's all.
You called the other?
Yeah, just something quickly. I think I just, when I listen to the presentation and I read the information, there's a lot of branding that I really feel like I don't understand. And when I look, I look at the price and I think it's a lot of money. But I really, I guess I just don't understand it enough to understand. I would like to have a conversation, I guess, with somebody like Scott, who could give me more information. I just don't feel confident in making a decision about that because I just feel like I really don't know what I'd really be getting for that amount of money. Do you know what I mean? Do you understand what I mean? And I just feel like it's...
I certainly do. I mean, from our perspective, from staff's perspective, we just want you to have the information. And I don't want to, I don't want you to come out with a decision on this, right? Like that's not the purpose of bringing it. But, you know, whatever you need in order to make a decision, we're happy to bring it to you if that's your interest. And if you don't have an interest in it, then we'll just let it go. And, you know, Scott and many of the municipal staff will give you their perspective of what branding might be. You know, the town of Yarmouth has had a branding process on the edge of everywhere. They can give you cost information, they can give you the process. They can, they can do that for, there are other municipalities that have done this that can do that for you.
It would be nice to know from them, you know, they've been through the process. Do they feel like it was beneficial? Do they feel like it made a difference? I just, I feel like I don't know enough about it to be able to really make a decision. Not that we had to make one tonight, but I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just, I feel like I don't have enough knowledge about it.
For myself, we have budgets coming up, deliberations and that, and that's where we'd rather table it and wait till our budget comes out and see what's going on and, you know, move from there.
I agree.
I agree with that as well.
So let's wait, okay, if it's in consensus. Or would you want Alan more direction than that?
To bring it during budget deliberations?
To see where our budget falls in.
Right.
We want to see where, myself, I want to see where we fit in with our budget. We have a building that we're building, you know?
Can we table, can we like sort of like just table it for now and revisit maybe later on another period of time?
Absolutely, we can do that. I think the only piece is the website. Now, I mean, it's possible that if you suddenly decide that the branding is the way to go and we've already invested this time and money, we can finish the upgrade of the website. And then if there's a second upgrade, well, there's a second upgrade. It won't take as long because it's nicer than the one that was there before. But, you know, that's not necessarily the end of the world. I think for Scott, it's important that he has that direction, from me, of course.
So when you said 3,000, that's spanned up to now and it's going to be more? Or 3,000 is basically what it's going to cost to stock grade it?
What it is, is we're actually part of a group. I say 3,000, I'm not sure I was clear on exactly what that meant. We're part of a group that everybody pays a certain amount every year.
Oh, I see.
So it would be, it would be that we would like, if we did it differently, we would come out of that membership, which would save us, sorry, it would save us $3,000 per year if we were not part of this website initiative. But we would have a cost of the website that would be over and above that.
Okay, we'll table that, sort it down after budget deliberations and, you know, we'll put it back on the agenda to see where we, if we're interested. Very good. Number seven, financial statements up to December 2019. We have a 14-page attachment and a one-page attachment and another one-page attachment. So I'll pass that on to our CAO.
Okay. Marsha sends her regrets, she's ill. She would have presented tonight. So the surplus at the end of December is 100 and is projected to be 162,349, of which 146,757 would be operating fund surplus. The difference is surpluses in the Tuscan Sewer and West Pamlico Sewer. And there's also a, currently a small deficit in the Middle Lower East Pamlico Water Utility operations. And that's due to some of the heavy repairs that we're doing this year. I'm not going to go line by line by line. I will say that from a revenue perspective, we're not anticipating transferring from our operating reserve. When we first did our budget, we felt like we might need some money out of the operating reserve. We now have come to that determination that outside of something extraordinary, we're not going to require that transfer. So that's no longer reflected in your revenue. So if you see on page one, there's a negative $148,000 amount. A good section of that has to do with the fact that we're no longer bringing in the revenue, okay? The other, the other reason why that's so high is that we're not bringing in surplus revenue from the West Pamlico Sewer to pay for the building until we rectify this dewatering. We obviously put any sort of construction on hold. So that's the other reason why that's showing. It looks like a negative, but... It looks like a negative, but it's a negative meaning we're not getting the money from another reserve. So it's not like we've lost revenue, the revenue's still there, okay? Um, uh, good, good results from detransfer tax revenues. Um, we've already surpassed the current year budget uh, in December. So it's been, it's been a, a successful year for detransfer taxes. Um, it could be one of the best years, it's hard to tell until the end of the year. And uh, extraordinary revenues and penalties and interest on taxes. So that would be investment income, uh, as well as interest income on outstanding taxes is performing better than we expected. Some of that has to do with the interest rate associated with the investment income. Uh, the, the extraordinary revenue, a big section of that would be um, uh, that we are, we build additional services to uh, airport and other units. So there's, there's extraordinary revenues from, from other sources, were more than what we expected. So on page two, there's expenditures and uh, I'm not gonna go line by line by line. I, I will say that most departments are showing positive uh, positive results, meaning better than budgeted. Um, and when we're better than budgeted, that means less than budgeted for expenses. Uh, thirty-four thousand uh, in savings in general government services, most of which uh, is in uh, I T and employer benefits. Usually I T, our I T department does a March Madness uh, exercise where they look at what the interest in, um, the equipment is required and, and, and make, doesn't necessarily order it early in the year. They usually order it later in the years, which is one of the reasons why you see a surplus there. Uh, property, and then in protective services, there's a thirty-three thousand dollar savings, most of which is under property inspection and public works. And there's a variety of lines that is the reason why that is. Some of that, it, at the end of the day, it'll be less than that at the end of the year, some of that is timing. Uh, fire protection is down quite a bit as well. What we're finding is that the training budget is high, but it's not being used. So um, we need to investigate that because um, we're clearly, we, we've been putting more and more money aside to assist on training, but it's not being utilized efficiently. And so we need to reassess what this money is designed for, why is it, why is it this high? Is it, actually, does it have to be this high? And if it does, let's, let's utilize it differently. So it is part of the work that we're gonna be un- undertaking in the next year. Um, if we look at uh, environmental health services, there's a huge savings in the West Pumniko sewer. That's because we anticipated the construction of the building and that didn't happen. So where there's a reduction in revenue, there is also a reduction in expenses. We are expecting a surplus at the end of the year for West Pumniko and uh, which is, is typical. Uh, what we typically do is, is make sure the rate is high enough that we're setting aside money for later. Uh, and why do we do that? Well, if we don't do that, then our rate has to skyrocket when we have a big job. So I'm looking at Pumniko representative, that's what I'm saying that.
You always put some money aside for, you know, for projects and rainy day, and that's right, so no, it's good business.
That's, I, I would have to agree with that, so.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. So, uh, so environmental development services is practically as budgeted. Our planning uh, costs are gonna be higher than expected. Um, because the, the L U B and N P S uh, work that we've done and the special work that we've done will be over budget. But that would be the only line I'm expecting to stay um, uh, in, in the red. Everything else ought to come either black or very close to. Uh, recreation and cultural is up thirty-one, most of that has to do with timing around the Tuscan courthouse and museum. They anticipated some, some expenditures, uh, some capital expenses that have not yet occurred. Um, and may not occur, in fact, so, uh, most of which had to do with the, the well and anyway, it's a long story, but we won't get too far in the weeds. Um, and recreation is ahead as, as they usually are. So that is mostly the breakdown that, that breaks down the one sixty-two. Um, uh, the full report and the full detail is attached. So as you know, we've been providing a little bit more information at each quarter. So we're into December and so uh, the detail is there. If you have any questions at this time, I would certainly uh, entertain any sort of questions. And then there's another couple of reports that I'll really briefly touch um, after, if there's, if, you know, after the questions on this report are, are satisfied.
Any questions on the report? I, I have one, uh, probably some people won't like the question. The, the library in Pumniko, uh, from what I'm hearing, not in Pumniko, but I'm hearing like in town, some people that use it, a lot of it is just, you know, rentals of uh, some cassettes and stuff like that. Like a box. Some of, some of the, yes, it's not a whole lot with the books and that. So the, the Pumniko, the Pumniko, is it something we need to have? And I'm not by any means uh, saying that we have to shut it down, just questioning that expenditure. Is that where, are we mandated to have in the municipality of Aragile, a library? At the mall, through our association with the library?
Right, we're, we're not mandated to have that library. Uh, I will say that we've been having some conversations with the Western Counties Regional Library. They're very concerned about the current location of that library. It's passed its useful life and we are investigating, um, uh, passively investigating at this time. Uh, we're not actively engaged in, in, in this at this time. We are working around it, uh, understanding if there's another location that would be suitable. I know the councils had this conversation before. So one of the things that you should uh, be aware of is that the Western Counties Regional Library receives funding for a bilingual uh, uh, facility, a bilingual position. So they receive, I think it's federal, I'm not a hundred percent sure, federal funding to support that position. Um, so uh, so first of all, it, 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 there, there is funding supporting that, that is, that is obviously not municipal. Our responsibility is to, is to run the building. So we pay for the janitorial uh, wages, oil, telephone, et cetera, maintenance related. And then the staff that actually provides the service is funded by the Western Counties Regional Library. Uh, in, in terms of uh, activity, I, I'd have to go to um, um, I'd have to go back to some of the statistics that, that the Western Counties Regional Library does put out. Uh, I know that the activity in Pumniko is decreasing, um, but, but the library management or the, the leadership is, is suggesting that the location has a lot to do with it. So I, I think that uh, to answer your question, we're not mandated to do it.
No.
Uh, we do it and it's funded primarily by Western Counties Regional.
You've told the answer to my question. Yes.
Do you need a motion on the fourteen-page report before you move on to the next couple items?
Motion to accept would be appropriate, yeah.
Also move.
I'll second it.
Well, then seconded that we accept the uh, financial report as presented, although in favor, see the voice, aye, aye. I draw my name, she carried, so aye, and keep on to your next.
Right, thank you, thank you Deputy Warden. So the, the second attachment is the income statement for the reserves. So we don't, this is the first time you've actually seen this report. Okay, so there's an income statement and there's a balance sheet. The balance sheet, which is the next attachment, has all of the reserves, including the, the operating fund. So it gives you an idea quarterly where we are on the balance sheet. So, so first of all, we're, we're into the income statement now, which is, which is operations. So uh, so you have the operating reserve, which basically does nothing. It collects interest and uh, and either gets a transfer in or a transfer out. There's no expenses that go through the operating reserve. It's, it's there for, that's not the purpose. The purpose is, is to, is to send along any surpluses of the past going into this reserve. The capital reserve is actually split in two uh, funds, uh, one being the capital reserve and the other would be the gas tax res- reserve. They have to be looked upon separately because um, we have separate projects that can only be funded by the gas tax. So what you'll see is revenues for the capital reserve equal one hundred and fifty-six thousand so far, the, for, from April to December, nine months. And it has spent a hundred and forty-eight thousand and change. So a slight income of eight thousand dollars at the end of nine months. Um, the biggest expense in the capital reserve is the uh, soft costs associated with the administration building. So when I say soft costs, I mean, well, it's all uh, architecture fees, project management fees. Um, so these fees may actually end up covered by the gas tax reserve. So I just wanna be clear about that, that actually may shift over to gas tax. But for now, I, I don't have, I don't, it's not done yet. And that will have, um, that will, it will depend on what the province, the province's position is on, on it. I'm very confident that it will be claimable, I'm just not doing it just yet. Uh, the, so the gas tax reserve has, is showing revenues of five hundred and forty-four thousand, six oh seven. Uh, the revenues that we show are, are intentional, meaning as the expenses come in, we show the revenue, we don't show it before. So we received uh, three hundred, that, we received three hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars a year. But if you recall, we had a one-time double uh, in the.
Double double?
Double double, yeah, a, a large double double. Um, so just, just, just dispose of the cup properly. Um, so, cause it's the gas tax reserve, it's a bad joke. Anyway, so, so most of the expenses of five hundred and twenty-one thousand relate to the public road addition and the solar comfit project. So that's ninety-five percent of it. The others, of course, are the Mariner Center uh, addition or uh, capital improvement and the Tuscan SCADA system. So the Tuscan system, if you recall, you had authorized uh, an expenditure over budget. We haven't reached that number yet, but we will. And uh, the Mariner Center amount was not budgeted. So um, if you look way over to the, almost the last column, it says combined annual budget. That those numbers represent the budget that you passed in fiscal, at the, at the, at the, in May of this past year. So the combined annual budget includes all of the reserves, okay? So basically, what it's saying is at the end of December, uh, we, we spent um, a total of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We expected to send, to spend one point seven uh, million dollars for the entire year. So this is the entire, this is not a prorated budget, this is the entire year. So the items of significance that you should be aware of is number one, there is a ferry terminal upgrade amount of two hundred thousand dollars. We have not paid that yet, uh, the project is not moving as fast as we expected, so we haven't paid it yet. The other is the Eelbrook Fire Hall, again, same thing. So we committed a hundred thousand a year for two years, we're not gonna pay them until the project is well underway. So those two amounts, um, we may have been a little uh, aggressive in budgeting them this year, but that's what we expected and, and that's what it is. So the Birch Drive project is the paving project in, at the um, Plymouth Green Acres. Uh, we have not been billed for that yet, but I fully expect to receive a bill for that amount. So that's the extent, so there's, there's also, the other project is, that hasn't begun yet, is this fire pond safety project. We had to revisit it because the, the budget of twenty-five thousand was not gonna cut, uh, cut it at all. So we did engage the services of Charles Pochet, who is a safety advisor, our Josh safety advisor. And we said, okay, look, um, yes, there may be safety issues at these fire poles, these, but we need to assess which ones we can actually fix. So, and some of them may, may require T I R to fix as well, um, because of, the danger is actually in their jurisdiction, not ours. So uh, so that, that is an ongoing work, it's, I, we will probably, I, I expect that the, that one of the fire ponds in Wedgeport will receive some capital improvements before the end of the year. But there's no way we're gonna get to all of them and, and I think our approach is changing based on the report we'll get from Charles. So we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to manage the safety issue along with the cost issue and trying to find a, an appropriate middle ground. So, so basically, that's uh, uh, that, that's the summary of the, of the income statement activity for the reserves. Uh, we expect, we expected to spend a little bit more in the admin building, um, but of course, we're gonna catch up. Uh, in, as the new year comes along, we'll catch up, so.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, so, well, hopefully, I mean, if there is a project to be, to be supported, obviously, we're, we're gonna be uh, well into it next year. So that's the uh, summary, not, not too summarizing, of the three reserves. Are there any questions or anything at all on that?
You make it very clear.
Yep, that's right. Move on to the next one?
Uh, we can uh, do a motion to accept.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion to accept.
So move. I'll second that.
Although in favor, see the voice, aye, aye.
Aye.
I draw my name, she carried, and let's move to the next.
And so this one, I'll take a lot less time. So this is the balance sheet, operating fund and reserves for all, all funds. So basically, um, this will tell you how much money there was in the bank uh, at the end of December. And uh, so, uh, there were, there was, so, so we have restricted funds and unrestricted funds. The restricted funds represent tax sale surplus money, so they're restricted because they're not ours until twenty years pass. So when we receive money in, over and above the bids for taxation, uh, it is, it is not our money uh, until twenty years pass.
It's twenty years.
Twenty years.
So do you take, every year, do you just take some out, is that what happens?
So, yes, I mean, in essence, so after the twenty years expire, uh, we would then be entitled to whatever that number is for that particular year. So let's say twenty years ago, we had a surplus of ten thousand dollars on multiple properties. Um, that money would be transferred to the capital reserve.
It would go into the capital.
Yes, so it can only be used for capital purposes.
Okay.
Now, a lesser known uh, fact, uh, and, and this does happen, we have, we have this happen, is if you lose your property on a tax sale and the, and the proceeds are larger than what you owed, so let's say you owed two thousand and, and the bids were twenty thousand, so there's an eighteen thousand dollar difference uh, that, that the, the person or persons with an original interest on that property could be entitled to. So that's why we, we hold it in trust for twenty years. So if this happens and, and it's Nicole that, that had an eighteen thousand dollar gain on the property, you could apply to get that back. But you must, it, it, it typically done through the Su- to the, through the Supreme Court of Nova Scotia because you have to prove that you had an interest in that property. So in some cases, it's really straightforward and we've done it uh, in a much less expensive way to, to benefit the, the taxpayer. Um, and, and, and this happens, we have had this happen in our.
Do you have to be alive? A funny question to ask, or like, can, can the kids, can your kids apply for it or not?
If they had an interest in the property that is clear, so if you died and you said this land is going to, you know, your child, then your child has an interest in the property. So I, I don't want, it, it, kind of a legal question there, the answer is maybe. So anyway, but not, that's not a very common thing that people talk about, but it is in fact, the right of the taxpayer to get that. Anyway, we're, we're sitting on three hundred and seventeen thousand. Uh, the interest is ours, so if there's interest on that, we, we, we own that. So there's two point nine million in the operating fund cash, uh, one point four three in the reserves of operations, two point six in the capital reserve, one point five in gas tax for a total amount of eight point five. Now, that's cash, that's not, that's not counting the, the debt that you have to pay down. It's not counting the, the other assets or the liabilities. And so there are liabilities, total liabilities of, of two point zero six million. So, and there are other assets that are listed here. Uh, the, the biggest assets that we carry are in the operating fund and it's mostly taxes and sewer receivables, both short-term and long-term. So those are our biggest ones. They, they, and of course, they're huge in June and they taper every month as we collect. Water supply upgrade lending program is also a number that you should be keeping your eye on. Uh, we will be bringing this up to council for decision next month because we are deadline for the, the uh, project has expired, so we just need more uh, instruction from you. And we'll also be introducing the possibility of, of a solar uh, project that works very similarly. It's called a PACE program. This was, this was brought to you when it first came out and it wasn't something that was particularly appealing to you at the time. But we'll bring it back because we're looking at the other one, we should look at all of them. So, and we do have land held for resale, which would be uh, would be uh, land in business parks and residential parks. That does not, that is, does not represent the land that we own that isn't held for resale. That's in a completely different fund. So I realize the balance sheet and the way that it's presented here is somewhat of a challenge to, to really absorb one hundred percent. Um, the accumulated surplus of all reserves is at the bottom right. The accumulated surplus of all reserves is at the bottom right of page two. That's an important number to keep in, keep in mind. We are financially healthy. Our financial condition indexes provincially show us to be strong. We, there's a lot of, uh, of, uh, there are elements that will be impacting us now and into the future that we need to be aware of. We are still able to save money for the future. We still have money saved for projects. Uh, a lot of the smaller towns are not as fortunate because the level of service they have to deliver is more expensive and they are finding the demographics and loss of population to be, uh, hurting them more than it, it is hurting rural, uh, municipal units. So the towns are in more difficult shape financially, doesn't mean they're in bad shape, some of them are. Uh, some of them are still doing okay. But it's just to be aware and there has been quite a bit of talk about this, uh, in Shelburne County recently. It would invite you to, to go online and, and, and you will find these discussions. They're important discussions to be aware of. And I guess that's, I, I did wanna say, you know, in light of all of these trends that, that might suggest a reduction in, in population as well as uniform assessment and assessment values, we are still in, in strong financial shape today.
If that cap, if the cap, something does happen in the next three to five years, that, that would, that could help the bottom line to a certain extent.
Uh, it, what it will do, the answer is probably. What it will do is will even the playing field for, for the assessments. Argyle doesn't have a big problem.
With the cap?
With, like, there's, there is a gap there and it is uneven, but there are some communities that are experiencing tremendous growth in assessment values, like East Hans and other, um, other organizations of that size and closer to HRN typically, um, that are, that, that gap is huge. And so for them, it's gonna be a big adjustment. For us, it will be unadjustment. But not, uh, significant compared to some other larger municipalities. But yes, it will generate more revenue for us. And we, and, and you as a council can decide what you do with that, right? You can, you can increase your low-income exemption, uh, policies, you can reduce, potentially reduce rates. If you, if it's significant enough, you may be faced with a decision to do that. Uh, or you may just invest in another service, it's really up to you.
Any quite other questions? If not, we could have a, uh, a motion to accept the balance sheet?
So move.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor, say aye and aye.
Aye.
My name was in Gary. Okay, we'll go to full decision. Nine A, Article P thirty-six, storm and hazards condition policy. Yes.
There's no changes, so is this second, we, we've gone through this before?
Uh, Lori, is this the first time we bring this one?
Yes.
First time you bring this one? I was thinking of another one.
Same here, yeah, I wondered.
Yeah, that's right, cause there's no mention of vacation in this.
Right.
No, that's what we talked about, but the last.
Really, yeah, definitely.
That's right.
You know what, that's a great point, guys, I was looking at, reading it and, uh.
Uh, there, there was a storm policy, uh, prior to this and we, we'll be repealing that one and replacing with, with this one. Basically said, you have up to three days, like, it's very vague. So this one really breaks out who's responsible to make the decision to close, how does it work? What happens as if you're an employee and we're not closed, but you can't come in, and so it, it really addresses those. So, uh, this would be considered your notice period. I don't believe you can approve this today, Lori, is that the case? So be at the next meeting, that would be re-approved. So if you had any questions about it now, you can certainly ask them now or you can prepare those questions, uh, in advance in the next meeting or wrap them in the next meeting.
So if somebody, uh, if somebody's at work, you're at work and, and, and there's a storm in some others are home further, further, let's say, at the lower end of Morse Island, it's East Public Alba, Morse Island. So the person that's here would get paid, of course, cause they're at work. But because it's stormy up that way, that person could get paid also.
Yes, so.
Is that fair to the person?
What, what would happen is they'd have to use leave. So if I was unable, if I was living in downtown Tittle and couldn't get out on account of, oh, I don't know, high tide, which is a true statement, uh, 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 you know, and the, and the office wasn't closed and I wasn't able to come in and I wasn't able to work at home. So some people can work from home. And, and, and that's okay, you work from home and, and you worked and you're paid because you worked. But if you were unable to come in due to storm conditions, for instance, and, uh, you have to use a vacation day if the office isn't closed. So you can take a leave, you just, you just don't get a freebie day.
That's right.
Right? And, and, and so it outlines what you can, you can use overtime, you can use vacation.
I saw that. Great, that answers my question, yeah. Okay, uh, any other questions? If not, we'll, this will, we'll have this at our next meeting. And we can, you know, address, uh, the motion to accept that or not. Okay, maintenance, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, attachment two pages.
I'm going to.
You're gonna have to.
That's the one, thank you. Okay, this is the tender for a vehicle. And as you've seen, they're looking for an, an, an extra vehicle because of the, I guess, the extra people they have and some, they just need another vehicle to, to haul the people to their work. So they're multiple places to go, if I understand that right. And sometimes we just one vehicle makes it almost impossible to get staff to the proper places at, at, at the right time, yes, Danny?
Is this one dependent on how, what we do with the other one? There's two, there's.
Right.
Two attachments.
Yes.
And, and it's, uh, this, this one here states about hiring someone, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's, it's two decisions, really.
That's right.
We're asking you to consider.
So that if we, if we, if we did not approve the second decision, do we need first?
That's right.
Well, okay, let, so, so the first, um, maybe is the answer.
Okay.
Uh, so, so, so what we have now is, um, our, our traditional, uh, way of doing maintenance, uh, included, uh, we didn't have enough vehicles to do two teams of two.
That's right.
So, so last year, what we would have done was we had, we had Wayne as the administ, as the, uh, maintenance coordinator and we had, uh, I call, I, two students and a third person that was hired in May, I believe, off and on. So we actually filled that position with two different people. One, one was fishing and, and so couldn't come in until a certain period of time. And so, so, so two things were happening. The way that we were filling the position, it was too late. Uh, we needed that position April first.
That's right.
So the first, so the first, I guess, recommendation for council to consider into the new budget is instead of hiring that third person in May, we would suggest that we hire that person in April as a casual that could go six, seven months.
That's right.
So what that would allow is Wayne sufficient time to prepare the fields appropriately. As the students come in, which is, which is later, then you would create, uh, two teams of two. And so they could both independently go to fields separately. We could not do that last year for, for the reasons of staffing and also for the reasons of lack of, of appropriate, uh, vehicles to do so.
Okay, so my, I guess, it answers my question where regardless, we need that, that second vehicle.
That's right.
You're gonna need, whether, whether it's later on or what, you need two teams.
Uh, yes, I mean, if, if, if council.
That's, that's second truck.
I agree with you, I think, I think you, I said Navy, but I think you're, I think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
We had, I, I know to, on the maintenance part, sometimes that, uh, we were not a priority down the threads on and then I know, and then Wayne called me a few times and we just, just can't make it. Just too many things on the road and, you know, and people was hard for people to go use the field and, you know, the grass is so tall and. Anyway, they did what they could, this is, this alleviated a lot of that.
We, we, uh, we're very happy with the way that Wayne organizes himself. Uh, and he is, he is definitely in need of this, um, of, of this assistance earlier. It, it, it will cost us more money because we will be hiring this person longer and we are looking for somebody, it, it won't be a student position, it will be a mature, a mature, I don't suggest an immature, but it will be a, somebody that is not in school, available to work at April one. Wayne and this person will work collaboratively, will only need that one truck right away. But then as the two students come in, the truck would come into play. So, yeah, I mean, uh, and, and we're, we're recommending a used truck. We don't need to go in and, and get a, a high-level, um, truck. But, uh, this is the, this is unanimously the rec, the recommendation of staff. This is how we should be addressing, yes, um, addressing maintenance.
Okay, I'd be willing to make that motion. So it's all right to have the truck and the person in the same motion as far as.
We have two motions.
Or should we have two motions there?
Two motions in case, in case you have disagreement on one versus another.
That's what I thought, I'm getting that, the suggested motion here.
Oh, do I have it all in one?
Yeah.
You're welcome to not do that.
Okay, I'd be, uh, willing to make a motion that the, uh, person be hired on a six-month casual position of assistant maintenance coordinator be created and fill prior to the approval of the twenty twenty-one operating budget.
Second that.
We move and seconded, uh, question being called, all those in favor, say aye and aye.
Aye.
My name was in Gary.
I make a motion that the CIO be authorized to search or use truck to fill the vehicle needs for the service.
I'd second that motion.
So moved and seconded, um, any questions?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor, say aye and aye.
Aye.
My name was in Gary.
Right, she was a conflict manager.
The recreation, this was a recreation. But there's a recreation department, I knew that was in that, that's what I figured.
But I, I don't know, actually, it would have been a conflict.
I thought she was a, she was applying for the position.
Do you want me to say why I have my, my conflict is that?
You don't have to.
No, no, you don't, no.
I don't, no. Does she have to say why? What her conflict is?
Uh, not necess, it might be for transparency purposes, my favorite idea.
I would like to for transparency purposes.
Okay.
Um, I'm, if, I wasn't sure if the position would be passed or not, but I have a relative who may be interested in the position. So I wanted to remove myself.
Okay, okay.
That's fair and I think it was the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Is there a question?
So it's not you?
No, I can't take on another job.
We didn't approve the position through your office.
So we're all set?
Yeah.
That's not true. Okay, we'll move to nine C and, uh, nine C is R, RFEO one, Tuscan Alternative Housing two thousand and twenty. Maybe I'll pass that to her.
Uh, this is a draft, um, I wanted to, uh, we, we made a commitment to bring you a draft at this meeting and so we wanted to meet that commitment. This is not the final version, I've received some very, very good feedback from the procurement officer of East Hans, which is not incorporated in this document because I only received it recently. Basically, what this expression of interest is saying is, look, uh, we are interested in selling land. We will be, um, uh, it, it explains what Tuscan is in case people aren't familiar with Tuscan proximity of services, et cetera. What, what municipal services are available. I've gotten some really good feedback, that, the, the information that we've presented appears to be suitable. We just need to tweak exactly what we're asking them for. Right, are we asking them to express an interest or are we asking them to submit a proposal? So, um, so, uh, the advantage of, there's advantages and disadvantages of both. And in some cases, it really, it, it may not make a hell of a lot of difference from the perspective of going up to market. But it's just, we wanna be clear to the person submitting an interest what we're expecting. In this document, it, it says, look, uh, the land will be acquired. There, you, it's purposely the blank because I don't have that information just yet on what the land would be per acre. So we're saying there's a minimum price because we have to sell at market value.
Right.
And we may as well be honest about what our minimum number is so that they, you know, anybody thinks they can get it for a dollar knows better, that that's not the case. Now, there is an exception in here with nonprofit organizations.
Right.
Nonprofit organizations, you can negotiate a different price other than market value. That doesn't mean you have to gift it.
For example, Compass.
Compass is an example, yeah. Compass or any other nonprofit organization that, that has a, uh, nonprofit, uh, objectives. So, um, uh, so there, there will be additional information attached associated with mapping. Uh, we've purposely not subdivided the lots on the back because we don't know how much room they will need in order to develop. So it's giving them some freedom to tell us what they wanna do.
That's right.
Because I think the original design, and in fact, the one that's attached here, it strongly suggests that those lots on the back are already subdivided. That's actually not the case, so we'll be very clear about that. And so I guess the question I'd ask is, are we on the right track? Is, does this sound like something that, that you would, is this what you expected, right? So, and if there are any questions or comments, I, I welcome them.
Yes, sir.
Only thing I will say, I don't know who done this report up, but it, it's well done as far as what I saw.
Same here.
Lot of time been put into it. And as far as looking at the lots in the back and all that, that was, I believe, our objective right from the start, to open up some of that land out there for use of some kind, so I think we're on the right track, you know, so.
Great, so with this one, we'll just table this, uh.
I'll be bringing back a final.
Yes, because I was, as you know, used to move the motion.
So the, the only things that are gonna delay this going out to market are what's gonna happen with the land use bylaw and planning strategy changes. We have received a draft of those changes. We'll be talking with our, uh, uh, our planners tomorrow morning. So at that point, we'll have a, a much better idea of what that's gonna mean. The other thing, of course, is the changes that are suggested by the procurement officer in East Hans, who was fabulous. Uh, this was prepared internally, uh, myself and Lori, along with, uh, Hans, um, assisted. But we're not procurement officers, so, so we will, we will get, take his inform, his information is brilliant. It's really, it's, it was impressive what he did for us. And so, but that, again, isn't reflected here. And the only other thing is, is, uh, is utility, so, so if it's gonna, uh, our intention is to, is to put power. And so there might be, you know, delaying a, a development depending on when those can be installed. So we are working on that, we are working with Nova Scotia Power on that. We don't have a plan on that yet, but it, it shouldn't take long in order for that to happen. So that would be the, that could be, uh, a hiccup in terms of how quickly we can put this out. And in fact, you know, we can put it out and say, you know, that the development can happen when it happens, right? So, uh, anyway, I don't expect, I expect this to go out, uh, late winter, early spring. So, you know, within thirty days, I, I'm hopeful, cautiously optimistic that it'll go out.
And it's best to wait until we.
Have the final draft?
Until we're ready to, the final draft for sure, but. Until that if someone comes up, then things are almost ready to go. Right now, we're, we're not sure about the, the land use bylaws because they're, they're, it's just a draft and power's not there, so.
Yeah, what, yes, and so we can go out for expressions of interest and this is why I think I'm kinda leaning towards expressions of interest. Which means that we wouldn't ask for all of the details that are included here right away. We'd say, are you interested, yes or no, what are you interested in doing, give us a concept. That will give us time to, to understand what they're gonna, gonna do. And then we can go back to them and say, well, this is actually quite attractive, here's what we can do and work with them. The thing is, is we're not gonna get, I, I mean, I'd be glad to get a ton of, of responses, but reality is, is we probably won't and we may have to go again to get the same type of information to continue that development. Okay, so, so we will bring this back to you as soon as we clarify some other things.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, nine D, which is grants to organization. That's been three pages. Okay, we'll move on to uh nine D, which is grants to organization. We have, that's been three pages. And uh is that to do with uh what the community halls?
Yes.
Yeah.
This was a lay ad.
Maybe you could, yeah, because I read it quickly.
Yeah. The the attachment's a laid ad. The item was there, but the attachment itself is a laid ad.
Yeah.
Um basically, uh we funded all the community halls with the policy that we had, the special policy. So and we're revamping the grants to organizations process. Uh Kim is leading that. Kim has communicated with uh previous grants to organization recipients individually by email, telling them about it. We've we've gotten some really positive responses to some of the things that that she shared. So that's good. Uh but there's this this lingering item. And so the lingering item is the community halls were supported for fifteen thousand dollars times three. Three three halls received fifteen thousand over a four-year period for a total of nine. I know the numbers don't work out, but we didn't have three every year. So so it's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that you've invested in community halls and they were able to multiply that in some cases. We have not um, I mean, you're all familiar with what happened in the community halls in your respective communities. I'm sure there's more work that some of them need.
For sure.
And so uh so so I'm certainly not suggesting anything other than that. However, um that was a a major investment of a hundred and thirty-five grand. And so what I'm asking you is to consider one of four things. Um so one would be to exclude the community hall requests as part of the grants to organizations process. So and and there's precedent for that because we had a separate policy for it.
Yeah.
Um so we would consider it same as we do with Yesta and other companies that are outside of the grants to organizations process. Uh and then the three others are to include it as part of the online application. Uh one would be uh compete with all other nonprofit organizations. So you, you know, so basically there's no extra money for community halls. They're in the pool and they're fighting for the same money as as uh Les Amis de Saint-Han for instance. Um fighting is a strong word. The third option is to include them as part of as part of the online application and restart the process with the full funding. Right? So that's fifteen thousand per community hall per year, maximum three halls per year. And so the last option, uh which is the one I'm recommending, is to uh is to include the community hall request as part of the online application. Set aside an amount each year, but same concept but less money. Okay, so so um so you would put aside a pot of money for community halls and they would apply as normal uh through an online uh program, the same online program as anyone else. It's just if it's for community halls, they click community halls and and all of those applications get considered with a special pot of money. Um so it it is it is setting aside an amount of money specifically to help community halls. So it's it's continuing your your policy, but just doing it differently. Option four, I I've I've is ideal for us for a variety of reasons. One is we've we've really helped them. Um so so some of them don't need as much. They all need something, uh but they don't need as much. So so we're suggesting that you should drop the budget for that reason. Uh we have additional grants to organizations that have been issued to organizations since that time. So I'm just trying to stretch the money a little differently, like you got the, you know, we've invested in the Pameco Golf Course three years ago or two years ago. Musique Adyen has a two-year grant. Fire departments, you know, we have about forty thousand dollars a year. So those were not investments that we had in place when we decided to do this. And so that's why I'm a little cautious for the amount. And so while capital is still needed in community halls, it's generally a lesser need than it was before this policy. And what I'm suggesting is that the amount, the amount is up to you. Uh I'm suggesting sixteen. Two eight-thousand-dollar amounts. It can be, it can be ten to five thousands. It can be whatever you want.
But sixteen thousand now, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Anyway, that that's the end of the presentation.
Someone else, maybe someone else was before me.
No, I didn't. You go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I think you kind of answered my question. I guess my question was, is it that they apply to this fund? So if it's sixteen thousand dollars, you you submit a budget, I need this much, and you hope for the best? Or is it we give two of eight or two of fi- of five each? Like, that's kind of my question.
Right. So the concept would be, we'd match the concept of before. We would not give everybody money. So we could get four clubs applying.
Right.
And we would pick, let's say it's two, we'd pick two.
Okay.
And so if we had sixteen thousand, eighty each.
Okay.
Or five or whatever that number is, right? I mean, I'm just throwing those numbers out. But the idea would be that if you applied and did not get the money, you'd be eligible next year and you're likely to get your turn. Same as we did in the other policy.
Okay.
Just a lower number.
Any is next.
My next? Um when we started this last time, if you got money, then you couldn't reply for five years.
Correct.
So someone who received money last year, let's say, or a year before, it's not five years. Are they? Is is that all thrown out now and everybody's right back in the pot?
My impression, my feeling would be that that um that you would reset.
You would reset so that, yes, okay.
Everybody's in the pot.
Right. Now, council could decide that you would address um you would address capital requests in the same or similar order. Right? Because the first people that got fifteen thousand, it's been four years.
Exactly.
So that can it that can factor into your decision which one needs it the most. But I mean, you know, on on the flip side of that, the converse side of that is is you could you could fund, you could have funded Abrams River, let's say, last year, which I think you did.
Yes.
And then they have something cave in. Well, you're gonna you're not going to want to lose the building. So that should influence your decision as well, so.
I agree with that.
But but there there will be a decision, you know, a decision process that's going to be followed. And and whatever whatever is felt that, okay, this this club needs it more now, whether they got it last year or five years ago, could come into play.
Yes, yes. I'm I'm suggesting that the policy that we have in place that we used, we would we would get rid of it.
Yes.
But it would become part of your grants to organizations policy. There'd be a special provision. And so all of the same, whatever rules that we used in order to to decide the the halls funding in the past would continue.
Okay.
It's just there's no need for two policies.
No.
Right? So so we would just, we would tailor it, make it a little bit more, probably a little less uh because it's less money.
That's right.
There would probably be less needs for them to provide.
Mm-hmm.
Um be less onerous, I guess, to them.
Okay.
Councilor Donaldson?
I totally agree with doing a new grants to organizations uh policy. But uh my point is the the halls program we had was probably one of the most successful things we've got. The most positive we've from the community feedback. Uh I hate to tinker with something too much that's been successful. And you, I don't see why it can't be still a separate policy away from the way we've done it before, maybe lower the amount.
Yeah.
I'm thinking my number is ten thousand that I have going. You can't do a whole lot for less than ten thousand if you're doing any kind of capital work. So I don't I don't feel like we should be messing too much with the halls. I think we should just restart it right over again and give priority to the ones that got their 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 uh capital money in the first years. Sort of try to follow along.
Yeah, what we were doing.
Eh try to follow along like in a turn by turn as much as possible. I know it always won't be possible. And to me, that makes it a whole lot simpler than trying to squeeze it into a new policy to grants to organizations when it can be left completely on its own and make it less complicated for staff and explaining it to people and and that's the way I after I went through this.
I certainly.
Sorry, I don't agree with your recommendation, but sometimes we have to speak up.
That's right. Uh there's absolutely no, there's no, Councilor Donaldson's point is is there's there's absolutely no necessity to get rid of that policy. Uh what I would like to do, if you're if you choose to keep it separate, I'm one hundred percent okay with that. It's really the concept that I'm more interested in, not so much the policy look. I will amend the grants to organizations policy to make reference to because they're like two separate documents.
Yes.
So there would be changes there, but like if you're comfortable with the policy exactly as written uh as a council, there is no reason to 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 uh combine them.
Reinvent the wheel.
It was just really out of out of convenience to have it all in one place. It's it's really, that's just a preference of mine. It's it's your policy, hundred percent.
Well, we make it easier for the applicant. I mean, ones that are
At the end of the day.
The ones that are used to doing it the way they've done it is the way I was looking at it.
Well, and and the answer might be a separate policy, right? Clarity is important. Whatever we do, clarity is important, so.
Because they're mostly, well, they are all on here, so you don't want to muddle upon too much.
Right. And 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 I would, you know, my recommendation on on policy merging is is isn't really as important as the what is the amount and do we do an online application? Those two things, I think, are 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 just, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes?
And that's the only thing with the online application um that I was thinking about. I know I deal with a tend to deal with a lot of seniors and still to this day, as far as online applications, and not only seniors, I myself get stumped on online online applications. So I hope we'd have somebody that could be available here at the municipal office if somebody wanted to come in on behalf of an organization and be able to sit down with someone for half an hour, forty-five minutes, whatever the case may be, that would help them through that or that would do it up for them.
I totally agree.
Really, because again, like.
Yeah, and we got the internet issue, right?
Yeah, and and that as well. That's right. That's right.
To that point, uh our plan is to have Kim uh champion any sort of questions they may have.
Yeah.
And we will be setting up a uh uh either a laptop or a desktop that people can come in and and either do it themselves or have assistance, sort of like when you want to serve Canada, right? Like you, there's there's, you can do it yourself and if you get stuck, there's always somebody there to help you, so.
That's great.
Uh I I know in some instances, we've printed out the forms uh and then filled them out and come here. Can you? I mean, I think it was Charlene, Charlene filled this out for us and yes, and that's, you know, that can be done.
Oh, yeah.
Now, this does not, I mean, this does not change. We had talked about, I mean, you're talking about going online, but this revamps the whole the whole uh grants to organization process. What, I don't read that in here. Like, you know what I mean? Like, we were talking about the regular grants to organizations where, so this.
This is only halls.
This is halls only from what I read here. Okay.
Right. So, yes, just so that I'm, just that everything is clear, all of the applications will be online.
Yes.
Community hall and non-community hall.
Right.
And so the system, once you pick your community hall, will send you in a different direction.
Okay.
And 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 so we'll be able to see the applications uh for a community hall and consider them separately in the application. So um yeah, so I guess the question is, are you good with that? Does that make sense to you? And if the answer is yes, that's good. We'll make sure that that the online uh version includes community halls. And then the second question is, is how much, like, you're obviously still interested in supporting community halls, so how much? Right? And so so.
I saw the sixteen thousand is a good number. I think with budgets and stuff, we've got that number to me is eight thousand apiece. That's reasonable.
So so you could pick a number and then you can also understand that you can pick, you know, with the number, you can support so many halls, right? So you could pick ten thousand and pick one hall. Do you know what I mean? And it could go for nine years. You could do that. Like, it's really entirely up to you.
What was the maximum number of halls in the old program?
It was nine.
Nine.
We had four, no, but per year, we had forty-five thousand a year, right?
Yeah.
It was three, three a year.
We.
We didn't use that though.
We used forty-five for the first
First year, we did.
Year, and then I think the second or third year, we jacked it up. We said that.
We we we.
We had four really good applications.
And we we uh accepted all four because the year before or no, in that same year, there was one that wasn't asking for the four.
Four alone.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, it was one that only asked for like nine.
Nine. So we said, well, we'll up it to 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 make sure that all four did it. And we thought that was going to be the last four. We thought we were getting to the end of our, and then all of a sudden Abrams River came in last year.
Yeah. Counselor Donaldson?
So this council and future councils will have the same latitude to to make decisions year by year based on applications.
Exactly.
We just need some guidelines and a policy going forward.
That is correct.
So I mean, an amount. I don't know to keep the program going, what's what people think. I'm thinking uh twenty thousand for two halls a year. I mean, and we can change, we can change that if we move along, but we got to have a starting point.
Yeah, the the only thing I would I would suggest and and I, that number is is just as okay, sixteen. Um uh is that whatever you do, whatever you change, you have to make sure that you're doing like, because you're like, once you make that decision, you're really gonna, you're gonna run it through nine halls, right?
Right.
So if you change the number, it 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 may result in an unfairness situation. So whatever number.
Well, I meant by that the number of halls you go a year.
Of course.
Oh, okay.
Of course.
I didn't think of that.
All right, good point.
Okay.
Like, we made a decision to up up the budget so we could cover another hall on each other.
Yes.
I mean, options there. If only one applies, you you're not going to spend the money.
Right. So the other option you have, because you have uh a a two-tiered system right now, is that you may actually release, you know, you you may actually release funding for two as normal and then in September, you may release a third. Uh so the the advantage of an online system is that it 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 can track these things and and you can you can set it in the point where there may not be a deadline, right? There'll be a deadline for consideration, but then you can apply at any time in the year. And so it'll say, well, the deadline is passed, but we will consider this one at the next deadline. So you can actually make a decision in September in the same year to 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 use more uh money in that in that.
That's right.
We're we're gonna have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I keep, I keep doing that, I I forget to ask permission. So as far as the regular grants to organizations, are we still gonna have the spring grants and the fall grants? We're not changing that, are we? Or is that a totally different conversation?
At this time, I don't think we're prepared to make that change.
Okay, because we're getting to fall.
Two tiers. How much is in each tier i- is up to you. I really feel like this change is probably enough.
Okay.
And so maybe at the end of this, we evaluate how it goes and then we decide differently.
Okay.
At this point, I would say no.
Spoken with that, that maybe there shouldn't be a deadline and whatever, that it's a year-round thing. So, okay, so so we'll still have that. The only difference with the regular nonprofit organizations, not talking about halls, is that they will go online. The deadlines are there.
And and they'll have a set budget for for themselves only. Nobody else can get access other than the halls.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what we're proposing.
So do you, uh, do you need a motion to to revamp the old community halls grant, just different numbers?
Yes.
Yes, we need some added dollar value there.
Yes.
Make a motion that we that we uh revamp the the old community halls grants program or policy to um twenty thousand dollars a year for up to two for two halls or less.
I'll second.
A maximum of ten thousand per hall.
I'll second that.
Thank you for saying that.
Right.
Only twenty thousand, there's only one whole day.
Right.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Daniel.
All those in favor should devote my say no.
Aye.
My name, motion carried. Great.
Thank you very much. I apologize for talking a little bit long on this one. You didn't have a lot of time with this one in advance.
Well, that's one that's important to local people.
To me, that's such a success.
I'm having a conflict of interest here. I'm gonna leave the call for a bit.
For a year hall.
It's not a, it's not a conflict of interest.
Nine E, Solid Waste Collection Contract, uh hundred and twenty-four pages. Uh that was a biggie.
You gotta read them all?
I skimmed I skimmed over a lot of stuff.
I'll be back in the morning.
Yeah, I'm gonna read, I'll get your cat, yeah, yeah, right now. Uh I guess the request for proposals is there. Are you looking for a a board or just an idea?
What what I'm looking for, so our contract is is expiring at the end of March.
End of March, okay.
So I'd like for for council to, uh so I just want to explain what I'm doing.
Please.
Uh and then and then there's some areas where I I may need uh some advice from you and then I will be going to tender. I mean, we have to go to tender. We need to pick up garbage. Uh so this contract um does the same as the contract in twenty fifteen. It contemplates the same delivery of service as is as is right now. It contemplates the same delivery of service as is, as is right now. However, it does allow pricing for additional services if we choose to change in the five-year period. So the biggest one is the weekly pickup, uh, that comes up from time to time. Uh, as well, so, so the other thing I did was I did consult with the hauler and asked him certain questions about how is, how is it going? What are the issues that we're seeing there? You know, before I go out to tender, I can have a, a, a public conversation with, with him around the services and what he's, so I asked him about spring and fall, I asked him about like, would it be better if we had, if you could do that every week, like, just put out whatever and they would pick it up? Um, and, and he answered very quickly that, that that would not be, um, that would not work for him based on the equipment that he's using. Um, it, it's not impossible, but it's, uh, far less, uh, it could cost us more money to, to, to deliver that service. Seeing as, seeing as our, um, our, our residents are accustomed to the spring and fall.
Yes.
Um, I didn't really see a reason to change that at this time. Um, uh, so I left that the way that it was. This currently is written up as a five-year contract. Um, we could do a longer-term contract, which means we wouldn't have to visit it for another seven years as opposed to five. Uh, the advantage of that is that you might actually get a better price because the contractor knows that he's guaranteed or she is guaranteed to have a contract for seven versus five years. If you're replacing equipment, depreciation, uh, five years would be the, the minimum really. So, um, so it does, it potentially puts you in a better position for competitive pricing and it may entice other bidders because it's now a seven and not five, uh, year deal. Now, the disadvantage of that is that we're going, uh, everybody else is going five years, right? All our neighboring municipalities are going five years, so.
Is it all the same date that can, oh?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're all due, it's, 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 it's glorious, three CAOs doing three RFPs for three collection contracts. Um, anyway, gotta be a better way, anyway, so, uh, but, but, uh, so, so that would be the disadvantage of changing the amount of years. I can't guarantee that the change in amount of years is gonna make it more competitive, it's just logically, if the contractor knows he's gonna, or she's gonna have it for seven years versus five, it, it may, uh, entice a better price. Um, so I, 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 I don't have advice one way or another, it really is whatever you think. Um, the, um, we did talk about the plastic rejection, the plastics in, in the compost, that's been an issue. Um, we're, they're experiencing a lot of, uh, rejections because no plastic. Um, so, so they're dealing with waste check and, and we'll be involved, I think we'll be doing some, some checks along the way because this is a pretty important issue. Uh, the hauler has been, the current hauler has been excellent in dealing with it. It's not always, the resident isn't always happy to have a, a, a bin not picked up and sometimes it seems like a, a, a little petty when there's just a tiny bit of plastic in there, but really there, there shouldn't be any plastic in there.
At all. And no coffee percolators.
Uh, uh, you should really restrict the coffee percolators to ten.
To ten?
Yeah, there should not be more than ten percolators in your.
Unbelievable.
In your compost, yeah, so, some of the stuff was, was quite unusual. So, um, that's the summary of, of the contract as is. Um, I did also talk to our neighbors, um, I know that Barrington, uh, is currently negotiating with their current hauler. Um, I'm not sure how much longer that hauler, uh, is, is planning on providing that service. Um, that's, and, and, and the other neighbors are basically the same haulers as us, right?
Right.
It's, uh, so there's, there's not a lot of competition, uh, locally for pickup of garbage.
There is no competition.
Yeah, there, there is currently no competition, so. Um, and so, and, and the, you know, the, the hauler in Barrington is certainly not in the capacity to bid for, for our service. Uh, in fact, I think he's hoping, hoping to do the other thing, like, i.e. like, not do it anymore and, and retire, right? So, but I don't know all the, all the ins and outs of that, I, you know, I did reach out to Barrington and ask, you know, let them know that we're going through this process and, uh, and there, and they had a, a conversation about it, they decided that they would do their own RFP if they needed it. So I, basically I asked them if there's, if there's anything we could do, uh, together, but there really wasn't any practical way of doing that. So this is the request for proposals, it is in a lot of ways, it's a lot, it's very wordy, I understand. Uh, the diesel prices, uh, get adjusted.
So, yeah.
Um, so what we do every five years, we figure out what the average diesel price is and they, they bill us what they think it's gonna cost to pick up and if the, the fuel is lower or higher, they either, we either get billed or we receive.
Receive, yeah.
Uh, money.
I, question?
Go ahead.
Our suggestion, I suggest we stick with the five years based on our neighboring municipalities are doing in case there's any kind of administration changed in, in the next five years and we won't be sitting there with a contract that's gotta be on it for two more years while you're trying, like, to negotiate something between the three units or more units or whatever may be the case.
Yeah, but, unlike you.
And it's, it's the same hauler for the whole county?
It, it is, I think they're different companies, but it's the same, it's the same. I think they merged, I think it's WasteCo. WasteCo is our current hauler. I don't know if it operates as a different company name in the different areas.
Cause you still see Duffis on some of the, uh, trucks in town.
That's, I think, his commercial operation.
Oh.
I think his commercial operation is Duffis and WasteCo is residential.
Ah, yeah, you're right.
Okay, so WasteCo, I didn't realize WasteCo had, basically him and Duffis, they work together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyhow, I noticed there's been a lot more rejected bags lately going through our pickup area.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, I think they're checking more, I think they're looking.
I don't know if that's, if that's WasteCheck doing that or if it's the haulers, I'm guessing WasteCheck.
The, the haulers, the haulers put the rejection stickers on, the, the stickers come from WasteCheck and then there's, they're to advise WasteCheck that there's been an issue and WasteCheck's supposed to go and, and, and do an education piece.
Anyhow, I, I agree with sending it back for five more years. Somebody else make a.
Any other questions on the, if not, maybe we could have, if we could have a motion to accept. Move by Nicole.
So the motion would be to, to authorize to go to tender.
To authorize to go to tender.
Authorize me to go to, to tender on your behalf, basically.
Could we get a second or?
I'll second that.
Says by the contradictory, all those in favor, should do what I say now.
Aye.
My name. Correspondence and for information, we have the Nova School Municipal Finance Corporation Newsletter. Uh, ten B, we have the, uh, Western Ren Liaison Oversight Committee, two pages. Ten C, facilitated discussion letter. We, that's just for correspondence and information, right? Uh, ten D, the municipal profile report. Ten E, the manager's center letter.
I have a letter here that I wouldn't mind just passing on through correspondence if you.
Sure, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
It's just a response from, uh, uh, our Emily Colton regarding the letter we sent to the department. And he's just, uh, thanking us for doing that and he acknowledges the problems that are out there and that he's been on their case for a number of things as well, like this is not, this wasn't a surprise for him that we were writing letters for.
TIR.
For TIR, anyway, he just, he just wanted to send me a letter that he acknowledged that he received it. I don't know that we received anything from TIR.
No, well, I just wanted to make sure there was one sent, anyway, that's really, yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll go to number eleven, financial request, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, fifty-five plus games. And this is requesting, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, fifty-five plus games, Nova School are coming to, to Yarmouth from what I can understand here, and they're requesting some funding. And each unit is, is being asked to, uh, uh, provide funding of four thousand dollars. And a discussion on what's being asked here. If not, uh, what is the will of council? Would you like to go with this, would you be interested in funding this? I'm sure it'll bring people into the, to the area, ten E.
I read through it a little earlier, it's, it's a great pitch, great event. Uh, we've never hosted this before, so you have no idea if it's gonna be successful or not, but if you don't try, you won't know. Uh, it's a lot of interesting sports going on there, there are a lot of people in this area that's over fifty-five, so you should be able to get a lot of homies.
Well said. Very good.
So I suggest that we fund it for the four thousand dollars and, uh, there's got two options here, when, when to fund it, over this year's surplus or budget for next year, I mean.
Okay, uh.
I'll make the motion.
You make the motion?
I'll second it.
And you second it, yeah.
So you'll have to sort out how you wanna fund it.
Uh, we'll take it out of current year's surplus.
Okay.
Make sure YASTA has it.
Yes.
The, these games are gonna be hosted in Argyle as well as, it's not.
Really?
That's right. They're successful here.
Yeah, they're very successful, yeah.
Okay.
Question?
What's being asked, all those in favor, should do what I say now.
Aye.
Remind me, Motion Carey. Then we have, uh, in B, uh, Travel Media Association of Canada. And here is a request again from YASTA for the, uh, Trade Media Association of Canada Annual Conference and AGM to be held in our area. It is due by February twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty. Let me see what the other portion of that is. And they have a draft budget. And, look at the third page. Background, there's a background on that, that, uh, ten thousand percent, three point eight percent of the total project. The amount of the project, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar budget. And there's a recommendation, uh, fund the ten thousand dollars, it can be funded over multiple years. So you've had a look at that, you know, any questions on what we have here?
I, I.
A lot of money.
They're bidding for that, like.
Yes.
Yeah, they're not sure it's gonna come, but they have to have a commitment of our, of our, uh, contributions in order to bid as well.
Yeah, right.
And this may or may not happen, we don't know if.
Correct.
If they're not successful.
So they need an understanding that they're gonna get.
Some funding.
A certain level of funding, if you look at their budget, the budget for municipal, uh, grants is like, it's over a hundred thousand.
Right.
Which means there's over ten municipal units that are gonna be asked.
Yes.
And, 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 uh, so that's complicated, right? I mean, that's a lot more difficult than the fifty-five games.
That's right.
Uh, but it is a tri-county event, it's a YASTA-sponsored event, but it's gonna be in, like, multiple counties. And the money, just so that we're all clear about what the money is gonna do, um, the understanding that we've been provided by YASTA's director is that the money is gonna be used for familiarization tours for your current location. So Argyle's request of ten thousand dollars, um, most, or, uh, possibly all, but I'm, I'm safe to say most, will be invested back in your community, so it will be, you'll be supporting, uh, you know, Musée Accident de Village or whomever.
J.
Yes, all of which probably would require funding support to do a familiarization tour. So, so the money is being funneled through YASTA as the organizer, but the likely location will be your tourism operator's.
Right, exactly.
I, I think it's a great thing, when you're bringing people in to see your area and show them your area, you, you get a lot of repeats, there's no saying you don't, you know? So I'd be willing to, um, make the motion to provide a letter of support for the application to host the TMAC's annual conference and that a ten thousand dollar commitment be made to support our application payable over two fiscal years being twenty twenty, uh, and twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, conditional on a successful application.
I'll second.
Second, seconded by Kathy. Okay, any questions there, any further questions on that? Not, all those in favor, should do what I say now.
Aye.
Remind me, Motion Carey. And we have eleven C, which is a, uh, a request, uh, that there is somebody.
I've got a request here from Sound Effects So Was Nova Music Society. Um, they're looking for a, uh, community grant, three hundred dollars, what they're asking for. I'm bringing it forward, um, I'm just not sure how much money I have left now in my, in my grants and that, so, um, I don't know. I think I should be okay, I think, I think I should be okay, if not.
We better be sure before we vote on something like.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and, uh, so if not, what I can do is table it to the next meeting and just to make sure I have three hundred.
Really, I think it would be too much.
Musical?
Hey, it's Sound Effects So Was Nova Music Society and we are group-invested community members taking action to support youth-focused music initiatives. Collectively, we are committed to creating community partnerships and actively seeking resources to support youth exploration of musical art activities, including but not limited to voice writing, composing, performing, recording and producing. And that, so, they, they're doing well, like, some of that where you'll see is, um, up and coming, stuff like that, the band, and, you know, so. Um, but I'm just not sure, I didn't think I was gonna get this letter that quick, but I'll, uh, check to see if I have enough money, table it to the next meeting, I guess.
Counselor Donaldson?
Well, I was gonna make a motion that, that, that we accept the grant pending you have the available funds.
Should we do that?
Yeah.
I like it, we do that pending?
Uh, the only downside is if he, if he doesn't have the money is, it's kinda like a.
Yeah.
Kind of a.
We said, yeah, but we don't have the money.
Yeah.
Uh, we can pretty, we can get this information pretty fast.
Exactly.
If they're not in any rush, we could definitely put it on the next meeting.
And we, yeah, we can do that. I, uh, I don't think in advance would be an order, would it?
For next year.
Well, that is a first.
Oh, you mean for the.
That is a first.
Next semester.
That is a first.
Well, you know.
All of everything.
Like, like our CAO says, you'll never know if you don't ask, anyway.
Do you want me to reword the motion or put that in?
Yeah, yeah, that is cute.
Well, I withdraw my, uh, motion.
Thank you.
Based on, uh, council's information.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll do, uh, item twelve, which is, uh, the gentle part topic for next meeting or notice of motion by councillors. Seeing that we don't have any, any, anybody, is it a question period? Anything that we could ask Charlene if she's received anything or other?
Um, just, uh, there was, uh, Calvin wanted, Counselor Donaldson wanted to clarify, uh, the regrets from councillors, so I indicated that Lucien, Calvin and Roderick Murphy all did, um, send the regrets, all of which health-related issues.
Yes.
That's.
Nothing else, Charlene didn't receive anything, okay? Uh, there's nothing for the in-camera, so, and the German, uh, motion would be in order.
Move to adjourn.